At the pleasure of the council, there is a quorum, so feel free to start.
Okay. Okay, we're good.
NCTV is okay.
Yes.
Eduardo, we're good. Very good. Good evening and welcome to Millbury City Council meeting for June 13, 2023. We've just returned from closed session, so my apologies for us being a little bit late, but we've already done roll call and we will go right to Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could all please join me in rising for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we do have, we have a lot of new faces, which is lovely to see. We do have a software program that can translate. If anyone who's turned in a speaker's card would like translation, if you can make sure the city clerk knows what language she can take care of that before we get up to that issue, and that is the same for people online. If there's an agenda item or for topics not on the agenda and you would like translation, please make sure the city clerk knows. With that, we're going to move straight to ceremonial presentations, and I am very happy to have the Vice Mayor Maurice Goodman read the proclamation proclaiming June 19, 2023 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day.
Good evening. Whereas on January 1, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States. On June 19, 1865, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed, enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas finally receive where they were free from bondage. And whereas, Juneteenth has been celebrated since 1866, representing a critical turning point in American history. As those who were formerly enslaved were recognized for the first time as citizens, African-Americans came to commemorate Juneteenth with celebrations across the country. And whereas, as of June 2021, Juneteenth has been recognized as a federal holiday by President Joseph Biden. And whereas, this day is a tribute to the African-Americans who fought so long for freedom and worked so hard to make the dream of equality a reality, and celebrates the success gained through education and greater opportunity. And whereas, Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedoms and achievement while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all races, as it takes a national, symbolic, and global perspective and appreciation for all cultures. And whereas, citizens of Millbury and everyone across the nation should continue to recognize the importance of inclusion for all races, ethnicities, ethnicities, and nationalities, and work together towards equality, equity, and expanding cultural, economic, educational, and career opportunities for all. Whereas, the city of Millbury would like to announce the city's first-ever Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, June 17, at 11:00 a.m., located at the Millbury Rec Center in Central Park. Now, therefore, we, the members of Millbury City Council, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day.
And we have Alexis Lewis, Mary Ellen Davis, Catherine Haysford, and Mona Simpson coming up to accept if you'd like to come up to the podium and say a few words. Oh, and we have the president of--
Reverend Owens. She's online, I guess.
Oh, we have President Reverend Lori Carter Owens, the NCAA San Mateo Branch President online, so please take it away.
Thank you all. Oh, who's speaking first? We're going to go first. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, can I go first because I have another city council--
Absolutely, Reverend.
Thank you so much.
You certainly can.
I appreciate it. Again, my name is Reverend Lori Owens. I'm president of the NAACP San Mateo. On behalf of the officers, the executive committee, and the members of the San Mateo NAACP, I wish to thank the city of Millbury for this proclamation. I hope you continue to recognize this holiday every year. Yes, we're commemorating the freedom of the last enslaved people who were in Galveston, Texas at the time, but by recognizing their freedom and celebrating their freedom today, we are celebrating the freedom of all Americans. None of us is free until all of us are free. The Declaration of Independence laid the foundation, but it was just words of parchment until this country started to get real about extending liberty to every American. The first Juneteenth was just the beginning of that journey for our newly freed citizens. Celebrating Juneteenth today is recognition of the continuation of that journey. This journey is one that we're still on, for we have not yet arrived. It is a journey to fully recognize the freedom of all Americans. So again, on behalf of the San Mateo NAACP, I thank you for this proclamation. May God bless the city of Millbury, the state of California, and may God bless America. Again, I am so sorry that I can't stay with you longer, but I have several events tonight to attend via Zoom, so thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you, Reverend, and hopefully we'll see you on Saturday. With that, ladies--
I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Alexis Lewis. I'm a resident of San Mateo, and I'm the first Vice President of the NAACP. I'm also a member of other organizations, the Foster City Association of Black Residents, and my church, Island United Church in Foster City. And with me tonight is Mary Ellen Davis, Mona Simpson, and Catherine Haysford. And Maurice, thank you for giving that history of Juneteenth to us. I was going to do just a little bit of it, but I won't repeat what you said, so I'm just going to read something from President Biden. He said, "We grow stronger as a country when we honestly confront our past injustices, including the profound suffering and injustice wrought by slavery and generations of segregation and discrimination against Black Americans. To him, we must remember, we must never rest until the promise of our nation is made real to all Americans." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mary Ellen Davis, live in Foster City. I'm a member of NAACP and also Foster City Black Residents. Don't want to hold you, but I just want to thank you, Goodman, and everyone here for the proclamation for Juneteenth. Thank you so very much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Haysford. I'm the--
Catherine, you might want to talk a little bit closer to the mic.
Oh, I'm Catherine Haysford. I'm the third Vice President of the NAACP, and it just made me so happy and proud to be up here and see Maurice read the proclamation. I consider him my adopted son, and I just wanted to say that my birthday is June 18. So we'll be doing a lot of celebrating, and I won't take up any more time, but your city, the Harriet Tubman statue, I came up for that event replanting. But the energy of the city is so welcoming. It's like being at home, so thank you for your kindness. Thank you for the support that you-- --civilize Juneteenth celebrations.
Thank you, and ladies, we, the council, would love to have a picture with you with the proclamation, and I think we'll do it up here. Eduardo, keep me honest. Oops, sorry. Thank you, ladies, and see you on Saturday.
--outdoor living spaces, reduce property values, hinder outdoor work, reduce livestock productivity, and have a negative impact on the environment. And whereas, as a result of the threat mosquitoes pose to California's economic development and health of its citizens 108 years ago, the California Legislature enacted California's Mosquito Abatement Districts Act, Assembly Bill 1590 passed in 1915. We all remember so well. And whereas, professional mosquito and vector control based on scientific research has made great advances in safely reducing mosquito and vector populations, the diseases they transmit and the-- The San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District's mission is to safeguard the health and comfort of the citizens of San Mateo County through a science-based program of integrated management. And San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control Districts work with mosquito and vector control districts throughout California, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and the California Department of Health to reduce pesticides risks to humans from mosquito and vector-borne diseases and nuisances. The Nations, the National Mosquito Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of the threat of diseases and encourage the public to take action in preventing mosquito-transmitted diseases, and will highlight the activities of the various mosquito and vector research and control agencies working to minimize the health threat within California. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbury City Council, do hereby proclaim Week of June 18 through 24, 2023, as Mosquito Awareness Week. So by working together here, we can make a difference, and accepting tonight--
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned we have our San Mateo County Vector Control District Trustee, Dr. Mohammed Balum. Please join us at the podium. Excellent. Oh, that's the next issue, but so stay up there. Accept the proclamation, then you're on stage.
Hello, Mayor Ann Schneider, city council members. I'm really delighted here to be accepting the proclamation for the Mosquito and Vector Control Week. My name is Mohammed Balum. I've been in Millbury since 2006 with my wife and three daughters. We really enjoy living here in Millbury. I'm also been a part of the trustee for the city of Millbury at Mosquito and Vector Control for almost six years. I have been seen at the service and the provider to our city and for our residents, and I think they are doing really a great job. The district is financially is very balanced. They have applied science and the service to control mosquitoes, ticks, and other vectors in the country.
Thank you. And if you want to stay right there, we'll move right into our annual San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District update, and now we have District Manager Brian Weber. Join us, Mr. Weber.
Thanks for having us. I'll try to be a little more concise in the proclamation with my slides. Again, as mentioned, I'm the District Manager of San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control. Next slide. Okay, who are we? So we're an independent special districts, a government agency funded by property taxes and special assessments. The services we provide, the services we provide are no additional charge to the residents of San Mateo County, and I just quickly want to read our mission. It is to safeguard the health and comfort of the citizens of San Mateo County through a planned program to monitor and reduce mosquitoes and other vectors. Next slide. Okay, so most of you know how mosquitoes are produced. You see the water here. It must be standing water. They develop in about seven to 10 days, typically in the summer, and then they hatch out into this adult mosquito that can transmit diseases. In the bottom right corner, you can see report dead birds. Here in San Mateo County, that's one of our best indicators of if virus is in the area, so a bird will die. If residents can call us, you can see the number right there, 877-WNV-BIRD, or you can call the district, and our staff will come out the same day, pick up the bird, and we have the equipment in-house to test that bird for West Nile virus. If the bird is positive, then we try and collect adult mosquitoes and search for the virus to identify if there are mosquitoes flying around that could actively transmit virus to humans. Next slide. Okay, so some of what our staff does here on the left side of the slide, you can see this is our typical mosquito breeding sources that residents can help us with, dump, you know, dump the water out. So we had a lot of rain this season. There are a lot of these typical containers on the sides of people's homes and backyards. A lot of what residents can do besides dumping these out is just call the district. With the district staff, we have nine technicians working countywide, and what we do is we come out, we actually look for the water source and reduce it. So we'll talk to your neighbors, educate your neighbors, we check the, some of the city's infrastructure drains, make sure everything's draining properly, and then we eliminate the water source. Next slide. Okay, so I'm just going to go through some of the services we provide, and the first one here you see is mosquito fish. So that is their common name. Mosquito fish will actually eat anything, and therefore, they can only be put in man-made containers, but we have a lot of swimming pools throughout the county that are not in swimming condition anymore. Typically, we call them green pools, that we populate with these fish, and they can eat the mosquito larvae without requiring pesticides or a technician to check on that water body for up to 10 years or even more. So we distribute, we distribute these fish. If you call, they often go in ornamental fish ponds, like I said, swimming pools, or other water features that can support these fish. Next slide. Okay, another service we offer is insect and tick identification. So quite often, as a resident, you might have someone in your household getting bites. You don't know where they're coming from. A technician can come out and help you out with that. If you can actually collect an insect, you can bring it into the district, even if it's not of, you know, importance to disease transmission, even if it's a spider, we will identify it for you. If it is of public health importance, we will let you know what you can do to reduce that insect being in your house, and depending on what it is, we might have a technician come out. If it has to do with rodents or birds nesting in the attic, maybe raccoons under the house, and then we can work with you to, how to determine to reduce those vectors on your property. So, next slide. Okay, rodent inspection. So this is another service we provide. If you believe you have rodents in your home, if you're seeing rodents on your property, one of our technicians will come out and do about a 45-minute inspection. We typically like the homeowner to be there, but at the end of the inspection, you will get a report of everything you need to do to eliminate rodents from getting in your structure. So obviously, you can't eliminate any rodent from running across your fence line or through your backyard, but when it becomes of public health importance is when they are inside the structure. So typically, as I mentioned, the technician can walk around your property, identify all the entry points where they're getting in, and work on ways that they can be eliminated. We also provide you with snap traps and show you on tips for working with those snap traps and other tips and tricks on eliminating pests. Next slide. Okay, yellow jacket control. What it doesn't mention here is that yellow jacket and wasp control. So yellow jackets are the ones where you're having a barbecue in the summer, and you're trying to eat your hot dog or hamburger, and they keep landing on the meat. They're pretty aggressive, and there's a substantial amount of the population that can have a severe reaction to the sting. So we do remove these nests and eliminate them. You do need to know where the nest is located. So as you can see in this illustration, it'll be a hole in the ground, and they'll be flying in and out of there. Another service we provide are wasp removal. So you might see in the eve of your home, there's these little combs that you'll see, and they look like yellow jackets, but the body's slightly different, not as aggressive as a yellow jacket. However, we also remove those, too. So if you just call the district-- Yeah, okay, next. Okay, and a couple of things-- Okay, and a couple of things specific to Milbury, that we work with the Milbury Sewer Plant to eliminate any standing water. For instance, when the Milbury Sewer Plant has a tank down, and there's standing water for a while when they're shifting their sewage around, then we can treat that for mosquitoes until that tank can go back up. So that's one way we work with the City of Milbury. Next. Okay, and this is probably the biggest mosquito-producing source we have in the county. But as you see up here in the top right-hand corner, that is Mills Field Airport property, and this has up to 45 acres of mosquito breeding habitat. A lot of it's in San Bruno, but some is in Milbury, and it affects the Milbury residents. We often treat this on foot with certain specialized equipment, even up to including helicopter. So, next slide. And here's some information specific to Milbury in 2022. So I think the biggest number that sticks out here is the number of site inspections our technicians did in Milbury alone was over 1,000, and we had 47 requests for service. And you can see there were over 200 site treatments where we did a control method to control mosquito larvae. Next slide. Any questions?
You know, just here, I want to encourage our residents, basically to, if they see water, standing water, and they feel that there are mosquitoes, they should call the district. Also, if you see a dead bird, like for me, in my case, like yesterday, we found a crow on our basement, and I called the district, and they came and picked it up. So this is a service that you need to watch out for. Any vector can cause any disease around, so it's, we need to utilize the service that our county provide, and this is very good for our general health.
Thank you. Council, questions? Fantastic. Great, great presentation. I believe we've got information about this at our Public Works window, too. I'm looking to see if we have Public Works here, but I believe we've got it at the window. I know that I've got a lot of flower pots in my backyard behind all of the spring growth and the weeds, so I would encourage all of us to take a trip into our own backyards and tip the water over. It can make a huge difference. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for serving Milbury. Did we want to do a photo?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council. Tom Williams, City Manager. I would like to just refer this to our City Attorney, Ms. Joan Casman, for the report out of the June 13 closed session meeting.
Well, there we go. So the council held by special council meetings, three closed sessions. One was a matter about pending litigation. Another was a real estate matter concerning a sign out near 101. And the third matter concerned labor negotiations. The council took no reportable action on any of those closed sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Casman.
And Mayor, in terms of the Agenda Overview, as we discussed at the last meeting, I'll just defer that to you as we proceed. So very quickly, just what's happening around Milbury, quick briefing. We have many events now that we are starting our summer season, starting with this Thursday, June 15, at 1:00 p.m. we have the Pride Flag Raising Ceremony. This will be held on the west side of City Hall in the Public Plaza between the David J. Chakuti Meeting Room and the Library. So 1:00 p.m. this Thursday afternoon, June 15, our Pride Flag Raising Ceremony. Also on Thursday, on June 15, starting at 6:00 p.m., we have our Summer Concert Series that's kicking off, known as Beats, Brews, and Vines. This is at the intersection of Broadway and Hillcrest. So June 15, 6:00 p.m., Summer Concert Series, intersection of Broadway and Hillcrest. Also, Saturday, June 17, as was mentioned, the city's first Juneteenth celebration, starting at 11:00 a.m. This will be at our Recreation Center in Central Park. A lot of festivities for the family, community events, so we hope to have a great turnout for our Juneteenth celebration. And then Monday, June 26, is our Fourth Annual Milbury Rotary Club Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament and fundraiser. There's plenty of information on this fundraising golf tournament on the city's website and social media. And then also, we want to continue to encourage our residents to utilize our Milbury Works app. People that are out in the park, walking downtown, certainly if you see something that needs our attention, we want to know. And so we have over 25 request categories and are actively adding new ones as needed. Now, the app is available on Apple and Android phones, as well as our web browsing services that you can visit, cclickfix.com/milbury. Again, cclickfix, one word, dot com backslash Milbury. Also, you may have probably noticed all the new orange bikes around town from our e-bike program powered by Spin, and this is in partnership with the City of Burlingame. So we invite everyone to try out our new e-bikes. We offer a promo code that gives everyone $10 off on the first ride. This promo code, hopefully everybody has a pin, is MBSUMMER23. So M B S U M M E R 23. To utilize the bikes, you can also visit the Spin app at www.spin.app. And so this is a pilot program, and we encourage everyone to kind of use this as their last mile in a different way, a more environmentally sensitive way to commute. So Mayor, that concludes a brief overview of what's happening in the City of Milbury.
Excellent. Thank you, City Manager. At this point, Council, any changes in the agenda order? Anything pulled from consent? Seeing none, moving on to approval of minutes. This is approval of the regular meeting minutes of March 14, 2023. Council comments?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. City Clerk, if you could call the vote, please.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahill is excused. Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The regular meeting minutes of March 14, passed by a vote of 4 to 0.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next up is oral reports from City Committee and Commission Chairs, and we have no oral reports tonight, so we're going to move to public communication. Public communication is for the public to comment, up to three minutes for items that are not on tonight's agenda. I have a big stack of people for Agenda Item Number 9, so we're good there. Keep them coming if you want that. And if there's anybody on the web, on the web, on the Zoom call, if you do need wordify, please let us know. I have no speakers, I have one speaker slip. Michael Kelly.
Michael Kelly, I live on Kelly Lane. I'm here tonight to talk about the Milbury Anti-Racist Coalition. Oh, thank you. Here to talk tonight about the Milbury Anti-Racist Coalition. A couple of months ago, I was up here and talked about what Milbury Arc is, and it's a community grassroots human rights advocacy group that battles racism where we can find it. Tonight, I'm here to talk about what Milbury Arc isn't. But first, I need to set the record straight. I'm going to speak truth to power. I'm going to call out our city elected officials for accountability, and I also want to take this moment, notice the date here, June 13, three years ago today, Milbury Arc formed. We had a hundreds-strong march protesting the murder of George Floyd. It brought the community together. We come together to battle racism and police brutality. That's what started this. What Milbury Arc isn't is a political organization, and I'm going to talk more about that because it matters. Milbury Arc took the position of endorsing some recent candidates at the last election. Two of them won, well, actually, Angelina Cahill is out. Vice Mayor Maurice Goodman won. The sheriff won in Samhita County, and Councilwoman Pappan endorsed and wanted other candidates to win. After that, she dismissed and diminished from Milbury Arc, saying, "We're a political organization." I've been in contact with that California FPPC, the Fair Practice, Fair Political Practice Committee. I've got documentation from them, I've got documentation from the IRS. We are not fundraising for candidates, we are not recruiting candidates. There is no legal definition that says, "Milbury Arc," that we fall into the category of political organization. Councilwoman Pappan's false assertions have an extremely negative impact on our community. First of all, the beautiful banners that we designed celebrating AAPI Heritage Month were taken down off of City Hall because she didn't want to see the Milbury Arc logo next to the City of Milbury logo. And the point being is that it's this petty vindictive bullying political tactics that you continue to employ that I'm calling you out on, because it goes further than that. It's not just a banner can't go up. The City of Milbury cannot partner with a political organization. It breaks our partnership. We are a national award-winning organization. We are the second most effective group in the country, according to the National League of Cities, in our racial, social justice, and equity outreach. Further, what happened, Councilwoman Pappan went and said, "No Milbury Arc member should be able to serve on the Social Equity Commission that we just got formed." And Councilwoman Pappan, our leadership there is made up of elected Milbury School District officials, it's made up of the chairperson of Milbury's Park and Rec Commission, the chairperson of Milbury Cultural Advisory Arts.
Mr. Kelly, thank you. And sorry, Council, there can't be comments.
Sorry.
Time's up.
Time's up. I'm going to ask City Council to put an Agenda Item on to vote about whether or not we're a political organization.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
I believe we have want-to people on Zoom. City Clerk, if you could please announce them.
John, if you could state your last name for the record as well, please go ahead and mute yourself and speak.
My name is John Chan, and I live in South Ashton, and I would like to talk regarding my opinion to oppose the Converting La Quinta Inn into the homeless shelter. And yesterday, I met a house person by that Milbury Bible Church, and that person told me that he is a VA, and he said that he doesn't want to go to that homeless shelter. And because the shelter has a lot, people have pets, and has free antics, and then is very dirty. And also, people in that shelter can sell, buy, trade drugs, and drug dealers also doing that. So if La Quinta converted into the homeless shelter from bought, they will have a lot of unhoused people going to, through the El Camino Real to that place, La Quinta Inn, the location, 1980 El Camino Real, and that El Camino will become a corridor for the drug dealers. And then I don't, I hope people don't use that a good reason, so for mercy and have pity to those homeless people and doing the bad thing, you know, have a good intent but doing the bad thing to Milbury. So my opinion is that don't be hypocrite, and don't ruin the City of Milbury, and put the burden on the small city in Samhita County. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. City Clerk?
The next speaker is Marion, and if Marion, you could state your full name for the record, please.
Marion Kong. Did you hear me?
You're coming in great, Marion.
Thank you. Okay, anyway, I guess I heard about there's an effort from the county executive, Mike Calagie's office is intent to purchase the La Quinta Inn in Milbury to convert it to any some kind of unhoused facility. Number one, what I say is, you know, Milbury is actually, I believe, per the council meeting saying, we are really heavily depending on the hotel room taxes as our revenue. So losing that 99-room hotel is what'd be devastating for the city. Number two, transparency. Um, how?
Marion, we lost you.
Oh, I'm still here.
Keep going.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. And then, so I actually would like to ask our council member, all five of you, and stand up for the community, for the resident of Milbury, and then ask for transparency why the county has a right to go behind our back to even go to acquire a hotel in Milbury. And then the citizen here has right to know what's going on, what's the timeline, and also to put in our opinion of this effort. When I haven't heard anything from the council, maybe you are in process of getting this particular effort to be transparent as much you can, but I asked you to do that for us. That's why we elected you for. And then they talk about this, you know, and then the Milbury's small, and then I really live here, I'm happily live here, but I do want basic services that the city can provide me with adequate sufficient revenue. I want sheriff, public safety, I want fire, I want public work, I want parking wreck, I want to pave the road, you know, pave the street. If we lose that 99-room hotel taxes, I guess whatever we voted for 2022, it's served no reason, no nothing, because we made the hotel tax from 10% to 14%, now we're going to lose 99 rooms. So anyway, I urge the council to stand up for us, to representing us the most effectively you can, and also place your position on this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. City Clerk, do we have anyone else?
Mayor, I do not see any other hands raised.
I don't see any other hands, no paper comments, last call. Okay, closing public comments for items not on the agenda. Were you Agenda Item Number 9? No, we're coming to Agenda Number, you're going to get, yeah, no worries. All right, so moving on to public hearing.
Consent calendar, Mayor.
Oh, my apologies. Moving way too fast. Moving on to consent calendar, no council member is asked to approve or pull anything from consent, and I have no slips asking for that. So it is a motion to approve, approval of extended time of closure for the 300 block of Broadway for the July 4 Beats, Brews, and Vine series. This is an action item. Agenda Item Number 6, adoption of a resolution authorizing an application and a list of projects for a grant under the Local Streets and Roads LSR Program for the 2023 Pavement Rehabilitation Project. Agenda Item Number 7, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute a Sixth Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with West Coast Code Consultants for Building Division Services, an action item. And Agenda Item Number 8, records management practices update pursuant to the grand jury report, a delicate balance between knowledge and power, government transparency, and the public's right to know. This is an informational item. And City Manager, I had one comment on Agenda Item Number 6, and I'm wondering, can we do the vote, and then I can? And I'm wondering, can we do the vote and then I can give you my comment? Or do you want me to do it now?
If you have a comment, Mayor, I would recommend you just pull it from consent.
Okay, then I'm going to pull agenda item number six. So if there could be a motion for agenda five, seven, and eight.
Move five, seven, and eight.
Thank you, Councilman.
Someone, or a second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. No further discussion. City Clerk?
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Feng?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The consent calendar five, seven, eight passed by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. And agenda number seven, the reason I'm pulling this, this is one of the biggest issues.
Mayor, for the record, was that item six that you pulled?
Oh, okay. That's what happens when I'm getting over a cold. Agenda item number six, this is a list of projects for pavement improvement. And one of the biggest things that we hear from the public is the quality of our pavement. And I'm all in favor, great staff report. However, and I brought this up a couple of other times. I believe the town of Hillsborough did a cut-through traffic study. And that meant they were monitoring cars that don't come from Hillsborough, driving on Hillsborough roads. And with that data, they could go back and get a bigger portion of road repair data. So I would encourage the city to look at that. It's in our council goals for 2324 that we look at cut-through traffic. All of us know that we've got people cutting between the two freeways, trying to get to the BART station or the airport. If we can prove that, hopefully, we can get some additional revenue. So with that, just my comment to staff, if we can make sure we don't lose that every time we talk about pavement improvement on there. I would love to get a motion in a second.
Move item six.
Thank you, Councilman.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. City Clerk?
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Feng?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Consent item number six passed by a vote of four to zero.
Okay, and now for what the public has been waiting for tonight. We're opening a public hearing or agenda item number nine under public hearing. Hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution authorizing the collection of sewer service charges on the county tax roll for residential and commercial customers based on the fiscal year 2324 sewer service charge report. This is an action item. City Manager, if you could provide a report. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Mr. Mike Sung, for a staff report.
All right, thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Today, I'm going to go ahead and pass this off to our consultant from NBS to talk about the first part of the report, and then I will conclude that at the end. So our consultant from NBS is Adina Macargo. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and pass it to Adina.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Adina Macargo. I'm a director with NBS. And NBS was hired by the city to just help guide through the process of potentially changing the sewer service charges to tax roll billing collection. So for tonight, we'll just go through quickly a quick recap of the background of where we're at, what's required, the timeline, and then some benefits and potential questions. So at several different council meetings, the City Council authorized staff to move forward with different steps required to go ahead and look at the possibility of moving the sewer collections to the property tax roll, including looking at the, or adopting an ordinance. Excuse me, I'm also trying to get a little cold. Adopting an ordinance in April that would authorize this should the council decide to go forward and there not be a protest tonight. And then, so in the initial year, the Health and Safety Code requires that the first time the sewer service charges are going to be collected on the county tax roll, that there is, in addition to a published notice for the public hearing, that there is a notification by mail, which was sent out several weeks ago. And then following up with the annual process, should the measure pass tonight, then it would only require an annual report and approval of that resolution by the City Council each year. So the mailing of notice to the property owners did take place, as well as the publishing of the notice in the newspaper. And then tonight is the public hearing where the council gets the opportunity to hear from members of the public and the public to speak for or protest against the switching in the billing methodology. It doesn't, there are no impacts to the rates. This is simply the billing method. And then should the matter be approved tonight, then the charges would be submitted to the county for the collection. We have taken quite a few steps here to get to this process tonight. And then this would be the kind of final statutory required item, which is the public hearing itself. And then if there's not a majority protest, then the council could adopt the resolution directing the filing of the charges with the county auditor controller. And we would take care of that in July, should that be approved.
So a little bit of transitional information. For those residents that are on the odd month billing schedule, for example, if you received a July bill, the July bill will actually contain the last sewer charges on there. That would be for the May and June sewer charges. And then it would transition over to the property tax roll. And for those residents and businesses that are on the even month billing schedule, the August bill will show a June sewer charge, but the July charge would be missing from that as it would transition to the property tax roll. The sewer charge would coincide with the tax roll schedule that everybody's used to in paying their property taxes. It includes a whole litany of assessments on there, actually, including the presentation we just heard about the mosquito vector assessment as well. But basically, the two dates that everybody remembers are December 10th and April 10th, which are the due dates for the property tax assessment roll. The sewer charge report is available on the city website in the link below. For those of you that are online or have a computer handy, you can actually go onto the city webpage underneath Finance and Utility Billing. The very bottom of the page is the actual link. And currently, in San Mateo County, there's only three other cities that don't have the sewer charge on the county property tax roll. Those cities are Brisbane, San Bruno, and Foster City. We've actually talked to a couple of the cities. One of them is actually considering putting that onto the property tax roll as well. The last city in San Mateo County to do this was actually last year, Redwood City, and they moved it in June of 2022. Next slide, please. So what are the benefits? What are the actual benefits of doing this? It's a consistent receipt of revenues. And the county apportions this on the same schedule every year. We are on what's called a teeter plan. What that really means is that on a teeter plan, you basically get 100% of what's on the property tax assessment roll advanced to you by the county. So this also increases efficiencies. It reduces staff time for preparation of customer billings and process collections with the increase in efficiency that can help reduce and keep rates a little bit lower. And what we're really trying to achieve here also is if you have more stable revenue sources like this, then you can actually look at possibly getting a ratings increase. And why that's important is that if you have a ratings increase, you can borrow money at a cheaper rate. And if you borrow money at a cheaper rate, then it basically is less expensive for everyone. Just a quick aside as an example, a couple of years ago, we refunded our 2009 COPs or Certificates of Participation. They were at approximately 6.5% interest. We refunded them in 2021, a little bit underneath 1.5%. In fact, the TIC or the True Interest Cost was approximately 1.48%. That saved the city, you know, basically $4.5 million. And since this is an enterprise fund, all of the money going in is the money coming out. An enterprise fund itself is basically comprised, for sewer anyways, operations, maintenance, and capital. So that's why we believe this is important. Next slide, please. So with that, we'd like to open this up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sung. So we get questions from council, then open public hearing, and then we'll hear from the public. So hang tight. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, could you speak to, it's a tremendous, I guess, benefit to the city, but could you speak to the homeowner who may have a rental property and how they're able to pass that cost back to the renters who have been paying that fee? And what other cities have done to remedy there being an issue, a possible issue with them being able to pass that fee back without increasing rents? And then therefore coming foul of the rental increase law?
So from other cities that we've talked to, a lot of the times, it's a conversation between the homeowner and the tenants. And if there is an agreement that the tenant pays the utility bill and the utility portion goes from the tenant to the property owner, what a lot of other cities have is this report that we've generated out for the fiscal year 2324 shows by parcel number, your APN number, your Assessor Parcel Number, exactly what the cost is. And then what most homeowners have done is basically take that annual amount and divide that by 12, and that's the additional amount that they're asking the tenant. Here you go. Here's what the actual amounts are. And we haven't heard of too many issues with that. We've talked to multiple cities. I mean, check in with Adina on this. She's done this a few times as well. But that's basically what happens. There's an actual conversation between the homeowners and the tenants. And then you can just use the report with the actual amount to show that's what's going to be transferred over.
Will that remedy be, are we communicating? Will we make sure that we communicate that in an outgoing way to make sure that homeowners know of that possible solution and how we can provide them with additional support in getting those numbers?
Yes, so we're constantly updating things, including our FAQs, which are also available online. I've actually personally received about 50 calls on this within the last couple of weeks alone. And a lot of them are homeowners that have tenants. And so we've kind of explained that, pointed them to the website, given them the details so that they can correspond with their tenants. Most have been very appreciative and have talked about how this can actually be done. There were a lot of questions. And there's definitely are still more work to be done on that to do this. But we've definitely reached out to just about everybody. We've also done community meetings to talk about this as well. Wanted to make sure that we had upper noticing for everyone and everyone had a chance to kind of talk to us about it.
Yeah, no, the noticing is great, but it's really about the solution-based conversations that we can have and be forward-thinking and not wait until they ask and actually push it out. So that's all.
Oh, yeah, and we've actually looked at the business groups as well. And so some of the business groups have asked, how are we going to basically split all of this out? And we have that information available. So we'll make that in a kind of an itemized list so that they can see what that actually looks like and help kind of sort and gather and collate it for them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, no comments from council. We have a lot of, I'm guessing, people, this might be your first time here. I have a list. It was collated as they came in. I'll call your name up. You'll have three minutes. If you could please at least just put the street that you live on. It helps us know what part of Milbury you're in. In this case, I'm guessing we're all talking about something that may not be address-specific. And then council will come back and we will listen to you and ask more questions. And then this will be an action item. So with that, first up is Martha Ann Milliken. Our mic is a little bit difficult at the podium, and we do want to record it. So I look for MCTV. If you see me saying, try to speak up louder, we just want to make sure your voice is recorded.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My name is Martha Ann Milliken. I'm actually a resident of San Mateo County, and I do own rental property in Milbury on Hemlock. And I, having sat here through this discussion this evening, have a feeling that this decision has already been made. But I do want to voice, as a housing provider, I feel that you're shifting the burden of the sewer rate from us as housing providers, I mean, from our tenants to us as housing providers. You've talked about the burden of the water company collecting bills, but then we would have to collect the bills. And sir, I beg to differ that I could have a simple conversation with my tenants about the paying of these bills because I am in a legal contract with my tenants. It's not a simple conversation. And, sorry, lost my train of thought there. So I just would hope that you would take into consideration that when my tenants receive rent increases, which is what is going to have to happen, even though us as housing providers are under the burden of state rent control, and we are limited, the rent that is going to be able to be raised upcoming here, the CPI is 4.2%. It went down from last year. August 1st, we can raise the base 5% plus 4.2% becoming 9.2% that we can raise rents coming up. We can also only raise rents once a year. So when these changes go into effect in July, if I've already raised my rents last January, I can't do anything about it until next January because I'm under state rent control. So I'm just hoping that you understand the burdens that you're putting on individuals, me as a housing provider, and then my tenants who are going to complain when they get the rent increase, whether they realize that they had it off of their water bill or not. And the other point I wanted to bring is that when you have tenants that are responsible for paying their own water bills, they're more conscientious about their water use. And one last thing, the city of Burlingame still has their sewer on their water bill.
Thank you, Ms. Milliken.
Yeah, hello. The address is 15 Christine Lane. And I'm the property owner there. I also represent a cousin who lives up on Press View, but she's a pretty well-handicapped retired teacher. And the concern is just, I don't know, it's just kind of a negative association when you start adding to the property tax roll. For me, the whole connotation of suddenly your sewer charge becomes a tax. That's negative to me. But also, I just don't understand fully how, it's based on the water usage, correct? Isn't that how, is it not?
Correct, that is correct.
In other words, it's the amount of water that's used, so the tax fluctuates? Or the charge fluctuates? Is that not correct?
Yeah, it is not a tax. It's just the same rates that you pay are just instead of paying it every two months, you'd be paying it twice a year, and it would go on your tax roll, but it is not a tax. And there's no increase. It does not change the rate.
And when I was paying the bill initially, I noticed it varied because of water usage. The more water you use, the higher the rate is, correct? Is that not correct?
City Manager?
That is correct.
I'm sorry. It's going to be hard to monitor his three minutes. Why don't we, I'm writing down your concerns, and we're going to address every one of those.
Yeah, I'm.
But keep going, I'm just not sure, do we give him back another minute?
Oh, I see.
You're on the clock, I don't want to take, no, no, no. I don't want to take away your time. Or why don't we just start him at three minutes again?
Yeah, Mayor, procedurally, there's no reason to give him back the minutes of his discussion and his time. But we'll get all the questions and then we'll address them after everybody.
Thank you. Just want to give you your three minutes. So you're starting from scratch.
Oh, well, okay. Well, my main concern is that, you know, that fluctuation of the water usage and the amount of money you pay for your sewer charge. And that fluctuates. As a plumbing contractor, I mean, it was always a concern for my clients when suddenly their water and. when suddenly their water and combined sewer charge would jump maybe 200% within a two-month period, to 300%. And normally, it was a leaking toilet. And so for a lot of seniors and older people, and just people, even as a contractor, I've had just one toilet can leaking over a period of a month. And at least if you're billed every two months, suddenly you recognize your water bill jumped up to $600, and you know there's a problem. Now, what if you wait six months? Then suddenly you have a combined water and sewer charge of possibly in the thousands of dollars. So that's my biggest concern. And how do you pass that on then to the tenants? Now they're paying, they pay for the water charge? I mean, they get the water bill. And so I understand what the lady was talking about. You know, it becomes very, very confusing. And again, I just, I just have a very negative, negative thought of just anything being added on to the tax. Or even though it's not a tax, as you mentioned, it's still, it's the association. I find that very negative. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, do you want to take a moment to explain which portion of the current water sewer bill is being moved over to property tax? And then I heard two comments. The water usage during the winter months does set the sewer rate for the year. So if we can go into both of those and explain it's not, it's only a portion of the bill that's moving over. And it's more of a fixed cost.
Correct. So I think I can shed some light to that. So there's three pieces that actually move over to the property tax assessment role. And that would be the fixed sewer costs, the usage of the sewer cost piece, as well as the clean bay charge, the sewer rate.
Just for clarity, it's just the sewer rate, Mike.
No, sorry, you have to wait.
The sewer rates combined, there's three variables to it, but it's only the sewer rate, the total aggregated sewer rate.
Correct. That's the three variables, as the city manager Williams had.
Mr. Sung, the public couldn't hear that. That mic is just not the best mic. If you could speak up just a little bit more on the three charges moving over.
So the sewer rate, it's divided into three pieces. It's the fixed charge, the usage charge, and the clean bay charge. Can people hear? So the fixed charge is just a regular charge for the fixed portion in itself. That's a non, that doesn't change. The clean bay charge doesn't change either. But the usage portion does. And it's calculated based off, for residents, it's calculated based off of your winter consumption rates. And your winter consumption rates are defined as between November and March. And how that would be calculated is they would take November 2022 through March 2023, and then that number would be annualized. And if this were to come again next year, it'd be November 2023 through March 2024. And that's how that's actually calculated out.
Hang tight, he can't answer to you, but we'll capture your questions. So did we, we kind of explain that? We'll go back to public comment. We will come back to this and help make sure you understand what's being moved over. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sung. Okay, Ron Mc, Thomas Myers? And after Thomas is Mario Rodigiero. Please repeat at the mic.
Thomas Myers, I'm on Lewis Avenue. Great points are being made. Wonderful points are being made, and I don't think any of them have really been addressed. What's going to happen when the tenant ignores the fact that there's a leak in the toilet? They don't really care because we're paying for it. And that really hasn't been, you say, well, pass it on to the tenant. There's no real solution there. You're just telling us to have a conversation. Second, what's going to happen too when there's a leak? And who's going to monitor that at the end of the year? And the, how they're designating the charges still hasn't been clearly designated. So the usage, he just said that the usage is going to be on the bill. Correct? It's prorated and will be on the bill. But how do we know that there's not a problem and that won't be addressed by the tenant? Anyway, I don't think the bill has been thought out that, the true impact of the bill has been thought out. And I wish the council would take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Mr. Rodigiero?
Rodigiero.
Rodigiero. Mi despiace.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mario Rodigiero. Can you all hear me pretty good? Great, I live at 290 Poplar here in Millbrae. And the thing that I'm, when I first got the card about this was, you know, reading it, okay, our sewer bill's now going to be transferred onto our property tax. And I'm thinking to myself, okay. My neighbor thought, well, at least we get to write off the property tax part. I'm like, well, yeah, maybe for you, you've lived here for 20 years. But for most of us who own a house, it costs more than $1 million. And I think a lot of people in this room could probably raise their hand. There's no tax benefit there for us because having a house that's worth more than $1 million, you can only write off up to the million anyway. So that extra charge, you're not going to be able to write off unless your house is worth less than $1 million on your property tax bill, which mine isn't, unfortunately. So thank our past president for that bill. Anyway, secondly, what I was thinking about is the portion that gets split between water and sewer, like other people have mentioned too. How does that actually work? You know, so the sewer part gets transferred onto our bill, but the water part stays, I guess, separate? So there'll be now two bills coming out, correct? Is that how that works? Two bills coming out, one for the water, then one for the sewer separate?
Again, we're going to hang on to the questions, and we're going to get to them at the end.
Okay, because, well, that's a question, like, how does that get split between sewer and water? Because if you have a tenant, you know, that's going to be paying for their own water, okay, they pay for that portion, but then we're paying the sewer. Then like, some people mentioned, okay, what happens if there's a leak? So, and then the sewer portion's going to go up, you know, I guess, along with the water portion, you know? So that's kind of confusing. And, you know, I just, and then the only real comment that I have is I feel like, you know, I pay my bills, and I'm responsible for that. And if I miss a bill for some reason, that's, you know, on me. But I kind of find it not fair that property owners have to pay additional, you know, bills to the city when we can do that via bill pay already. So why are we, or the county for that matter. What I'm trying to get at is why am I being kind of forced, or all of us being forced to pay through our tax bill, something that we can just pay with our bank, like everybody else does? I just think it's, it's kind of unfair. And that's what I, you know, the biggest part that bugs me is that. So all I have to say.
Thank you. Wing Chu. And after Wing Chu is Josephine Torito.
Hi, my name is Wayne. I own a property on Grandwood Drive. First of all, I will say is, I believe, a decision has been made for sewer service charge will be added to the property tax law. Tonight is just a stage. We hear public comments, and whatever they say or any negative feedback is going to change anything. The question I have is, the reason why we have a meeting tonight is so that the city will have more stable or stability of the system. And I don't understand why it's unstable right now and why transferring to the property tax law will make it more stable. Mr. Sung here gave us some reasons to why it's being added to the property tax law. He mentioned consistency of revenue, efficiency, staff time. I don't think they are really strong reason. I think the main reason is the city has, one of the four other cities, just want to add to the property tax law without real benefit to the city or to the owners. To keep the record strict, the house I own is a rental property. I'm not concerned about adding the water service, the sewer service to the property tax bill. But I'm more interested in knowing the reason, the reason why the benefit the owner's getting. I mean, if the water bill or the sewage, or part of the water bill is not paid, the ultimate responsibility will fall on the owner. It's not a tenant. The property owner will be responsible for it. To add to the property tax law, I just don't get it. I don't, Mr. Sung, he's very confusing. When I came here, I thought the sewage charge is just sewage service. But you say there are three parts, sewer service, sewer usage, and clean bay. But in the notice, you just mentioned, you just mentioned the wastewater rates, wastewater rate and the sewer service charges. Then I thought it was only for the sewer service. So it's confusing. Now we're talking about three variable parts being added to the property tax bill. And also, he mentioned, Mr. Woodman, during his interaction with Mr. Sung, what's the remedy between the tenant and the owner regarding the sewage charges?
Mr. Chu, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Josephine Torito? And after Josephine is Al Arnolfo.
Hello, good evening. I live at 640 Taylor Boulevard, and I just have a few questions. What I wanted to know is, I know what I pay every month, but these new apartments, for instance, that are down by BART, I'm assuming those are owned by a large corporation. Now, are you going to go in and say every single apartment, condo, whatever, is paying the same rates as I'm paying? Or because it's a large entity, are you going to give them a tax break? You're going to say, oh, you're 500 square feet, so you only pay 200 a year, and you're bigger and bigger, so you'll pay a little bit more. So I want to know that everybody is paying their fair share like I am. My other question is, where does the money go after the tax collector collects it? Does the money go back to Millbrae General Fund? Or that can be used for anything that you wish? Or will it be put in the Millbrae Water Department to fix infrastructure, which is why we are paying such large water bills now? And my last question is, do we really have a say in your decision? Or is this a done deal? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torito. Mr. Arnolfo? And after Mr. Arnolfo is Bonnie Jean Patton. And then Bob Garrison.
Good evening. I had two questions tonight, and one was answered already. So I'll just move on to question number two. How will this affect my income tax preparation? Presently, I get a property tax bill twice a year, and I present that to my tax accountant. Will the new, if this goes through, will the new system separate it out? So I'm just writing off my property tax? Or will the sewer charge be included in that? So I just write the whole thing off? Presently, I can write the, I believe it's $10,000 off now on my property taxes. So I was just, I needed clarification on how that's going to work. That was my question that I wanted to present.
Thank you. Bonnie Jean Patton, Ms. Patton?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Bonnie Jean Patton. I was raised and reside in Millbrae on Barcelona Drive as a property owner. I received a notice in regards to our sewer charges that will be transitioned to our, to twice a year, to twice a year sewer charges. That will be transitioned to twice a year property tax bill. By baking payments twice in lieu of six times a year, this will cause hardships as well. In your notice, you state, I quote, "This change does not cause an increase in current sewer charges," unquote. We are currently paying three separate sewer charges, sewer service, sewer usage, and clean bay. I'd like to know how you can make a statement that our charges won't be increased when there is several new residential apartments, hotels, and commercial buildings built along Millbrae Avenue. These buildings require sewer maintenance as well. As the contractors or owners paid for sewer upgrades through their permit fees, the existing City of Millbrae sanitation department will require upgrades, if not now, sooner than later. There is a cost to upgrades. Will this be an undisclosed, hidden charge in the near future since you are transitioning to sewer utility to our property tax? The City of Millbrae needs to have an outside auditor to review the funds in the sanitation department records and absolutely hire no associates, no friends of Millbrae Board to conduct the audit and to be published. Along with that, council members should not be allowed to vote on this, yes or no? It should be brought to the Millbrae residents to vote upon with clarification because it sounds like a mixed-up mess right now. There's too many questions that do need truly to be answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Patton.
So, Bob Garrison, I live at 530 Hazel. I have rental property in Millbrae. I'm also a property manager. I guess my first question is, there must be a charge that the County of San Mateo is going to charge our town of Millbrae to add this onto the tax bill. And I have not seen a figure for that yet. You know, I think that needs to be addressed. So what is the county going to charge us to change this bill? And the second question is, is there really a financial savings to the city to adjust this tax bill? Some people may understand, some people not. If you own a 10-unit apartment building and you pay the water bill, there's going to be no adjustment for the tenants because you're going to just, instead of pay the water bill, you're going to pay it on your tax bill. But if you own a duplex with an in-law unit or you own a single-family residence, then you're going to have to renegotiate with the tenant if they're paying the water bill. And that can adjust your rent increase due to the 5% per year. So it can be a little more complicated. And I guess the other question is, is there a financial savings to the city for doing this? By the time you hire the consultant and pay the county to do the tax bill, are we going to save money at the end? And I think it's a bottom-line figure. Do we save or do we make money? Our Public Works Department is real good. As a property manager, when I have tenants who drop behind on their water bill, they call me personally and say, your tenant is behind in the water bill. They're really, I praise our Public Works Department. They're really good at that. That's not going to change much, but you're going to put the burden on the landlord now for, you know, having to pay that extra bill. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison. City clerk, that's the last, that's the last slip that I have. There are two, we have two.
Yes, we do have two hands raised online. However, it looked like it's a duplicate name, but I will call on them just to make sure that they're two separate people.
And if there's anyone else here in the public that would like to speak, this is a good time to grab that slip so that we can capture your comments. Go ahead, city clerk.
So Patricia Lamb, I'm going to unmute you. So Patricia Lamb, I'm going to unmute you. Patricia, you could go ahead and unmute yourself and start talking. You should have a pop-up.
Can you hear me now?
You're coming in very well. You're coming in well.
Okay, hello, yes. My name is Patricia Lamb, and I live on Palm Avenue. And regarding to this transfer of sewage to property tax, I understand why, probably one of the reasons that the city wants to transfer that to the property taxes, because when it gets transferred to the property tax, and if the owner doesn't pay the property tax bill, the home actually, it becomes an attached lien, and the city or San Mateo County can sell the property. And I understand that's one way for the city to collect the money. And I agree with what the other homeowners are saying regarding to this transfer of sewer charge to property tax. It becomes a burden on, I agree, it becomes a burden on us as well, because I actually have two units. I live in a triplex, and I rent out two units. And right now, I do pass along water and sewer to the tenants, and it really helps when they know how much water and sewer costs in Milbury. And not only that, but my rent is very low. And I feel like I provide affordable housing to these tenants. And now it looks like when that gets transferred to property tax, I really don't know how to pass along these charges to the tenants. Then that means that the homeowners, the landlords, will have to increase the rent. And I feel like, on one hand, we're providing these housing to these tenants, and yet, on the other hand, we're getting all these charges, and we have to pass these charges to the tenants. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
I am calling on other Patricia Lamb. Oh, actually, they dropped off, but let me try again. Patricia Lamb, if you could, I just want to make sure that this is not a separate person. Okay. All right, and now it's Diane. If you could state your full name for the record, please. You could go ahead and accept the unmute.
Yes, my name is Diana. I have property on San Anselmo. It's a rental. I have kept my property rent well below market because of COVID, and I have a family in there with several kids. One's a teacher, another's a healthcare worker. I finally planned on raising their rent this year, and now, of course, we have this. And I spoke to Mr. Sun, and I understand that their sewer charges are approximately $200 a month, if it's broken out for the year. So of course, if I raise their rent that much, then it cuts into the amount that I was initially going to raise them, because, you know, I'm not going to raise them a $500 a month rent. I mean, it's ridiculous. And it's just, I'm going to be eating it, and I'm still well below market value on my rent, and I just want to put that out there.
And may I have your last name for the record, please?
Steph.
I'm sorry, Diana, what was that?
Steph.
Steph?
Yes. Steph.
Thank you.
City Clerk, do we have anyone on Zoom? Anyone on the phone?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And I have no other paper slips, so we will be getting to all of the questions asked. With that, if I could have a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second to close.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilmember Pappen.
Yes.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The council closed the public hearing.
Okay. I took a lot of questions, and I'm sure staff did. But before I give it back to staff, I have served on the City of Milbury City Council Subcommittee on Public Works, I think since I got elected, so seven years. And I will tell you, in the seven years, especially with former Mayor Councilman Ruben Holber, we had many, many requests from the public to move the sewer portion of the bill over to property tax. So we started this years ago, in fact, before COVID, of looking into it at the request of the public on that. And so I guess if this is news, we tried our best to get the news out for that. We did it with good intentions, really. The initial reason was at the request of the public. And in tonight's staff report, it does talk about the cost that the county will charge us for this and the savings on that. But really and truly, this started because people were asking us for it. And I know the public has had a very difficult time understanding our water sewer bills, and they actually asked for us to pay it twice a year rather than having to try to come up with the money every other month. So I appreciate hearing the new comments today. It is different than what we've heard from in the past. But again, your tenants, I'm a landlord myself, so I'm wondering how I'm going to do this too, given the status of my current lease. But the water portion, they will still be paying it. And if staffer, Sam Batista, our city engineer, public works director, wants to go a little bit more into water leaking, maybe that's another workshop for the future on that. But again, this has been something that's been in the process for actually many, many years. With that, City, do you want to try to answer some of the questions, and I might prompt you with some of the questions I wrote down if we don't get to them?
Sure. Mayor, I think it also confer in here with the city attorney. I mean, we can go down, but I think a few things generally. One is that the water bill is not being transferred over. So to answer some of the questions about a leak, however that is structured based on the property owner and tenant, that remains the same. So if there's a leak, that's going to show up in your water bill, not in your sewer bill. And so if the tenant pays for the water bill, that tenant then will see that large amount in the water leak, and however it's addressed now, or whatever the term is in the lease, there's no change. This is not a rent increase, and it's not a utility increase. It's simply just a transfer of the collection of the sewer bill, moving from the, every two months, to the property tax bill, which is paid twice annually. The reason why that's a benefit is our delinquencies are 1.5% to 2% annually. That's about $160,000 to $200,000 a year in lost revenue. The county is charging us $10,000 a year to do this. So what that is to us, as Mr. Sun said, based on the TETER plan, it is actually a revenue increase, a guaranteed revenue increase, to the city of $150,000 to $200,000 a year, depending on the delinquency. It was asked also an explanation of how this relates to the property tax. It's not related to the property tax, so anybody's accountant, it's not tax deductible. This is just a method to collect the sewer rate, the sewer charges. So it's unrelated. Yeah.
I live in the City of San Mateo, and I've been there for 36 years. We have always been charged our sewer rates through the tax bill. So you will see on your tax bill even now that they show you the tax due on your property, and then there's a list of items already on your tax bill for various assessments. And this will be a line item. This will simply be a line item. It should not be a problem at all for income tax purposes. And it will be very clear that this will just be added as another line item on your property tax bill.
And then, Mayor, there was a question, Council, there's a question about it being audited. We are audited once a year. It's an independent audit, and that will continue. In terms of the rates, all of the rates charged in the City of Milbury are the same. So if somebody had mentioned with the new development, are they paying their fair share? Yes, the new development is paying its fair share. We've not only collected, and all of those units are metered, and the rates are equitable and the same from unit to unit, no matter where you are in the city. Those developments also paid a pretty significant development impact fee to make sure that there was no impact on that new development on existing ratepayers and existing property Relative to questions, several questions about property owners needing to go back to their tenant to raise the rent, I'll look to our city attorney, Casman, here, but there is no correlation. So for example, if the tenant is obligated to pay the utility rates right now, and they get that bill directly, as Mike mentioned, the property owner can, or property management company can simply charge the tenant. So it's not, it's not an increase that is subject to rent control or rental laws. How are the sewer rates established? So they're established based on the winter water usage, as Mr. Sung had mentioned, the months. Mike, you want to explain that one more time?
So for residents, there's a winter consumption rate, and that's actually determined between November and March of each year, and that gets actually, gets annualized throughout the year. And that's been in our city code for forever.
So even though the monthly water rates may fluctuate based on the meter charges, the sewer rates are annualized and they're stable, based on that 12, based over that 12-month period of time?
City Manager, if I can just add to that, that timeframe is used because that's the time that most of us are not watering outside. So it's the least amount of water usage, and that's what establishes the sewer fixed Or the sewer usage fee. Sewer usage fee. Sorry. I had a few more. City Manager?
Go ahead, Mayor.
The fixed bay charge, just so that the public knows, is from a lawsuit where the city was sued by Baykeeper. The agreement was we needed to upgrade our sewer system. So if you've seen all the sewer pipe work and the sewage treatment plant, that should be paid off by 2034. I think it's 2034?
I think it's actually when the last bond refunding would be. So if I recall correctly, that's 2039.
Oh, so a little bit later, although we have refinanced the bonds, which has saved money on that. So that's a fee that we use to fix because we had a system that was failing on that. And that fee changes once a year, or how often?
So generally, it would change once a year. In our last sewer study, we recommended not to change the clean bay charge throughout the rest of the sewer study, which usually extends out five years. And the last time we had a sewer study was last year in 2022.
So I think one thing that can help all landlords is that we make sure that we publish that schedule on our website, and if you're writing a lease agreement, you can see whether that fixed charge is, and your tenants can see where that fixed charge is. There was a question that where this money goes. All of the money, and City Manager, correct me, actually, I'm going to have you answer it. The county collects the money, then what happens to it?
Yeah, and so it's not general fund revenue, to answer the woman's question. It goes back into the enterprise fund, so just as it exists today. So it goes back into the sewer fund, sanitation sewer fund, 100%.
And all of those funds are specifically, they are audited, and they can only be used for specific purposes on that. And this is something I've been trying to help our residents understand, is the new developments that we have are paying into the fixed costs that we all pay for. So the more customers you have, the more spreading of the fixed costs, which over time will keep the fixed cost rate down. And I know it doesn't seem right, but that actually is what it is. And in addition, the new projects down by BART replaced all of our aged infrastructure down there. So all of that is done and brought up to 21st century requirements, and that was part of their program, and that did not come out of then all of our rates on that. So there are advantages to these new projects coming into Milbury on that. And then there was one, there is one that I think is tricky. If the tenant, the lady who has a three-unit, or any of us who may have people who are low-income, we do have a low-income program, and it's explained in the staff report, but how would a landlord help their tenant that they're trying to keep as affordable housing? How would they find out about that? And how would the low-income benefit for sewer be handled?
So the low-income benefit for sewer, the universal lifeline program, which is very similar to what PGA would have in CARES.
Mike, you need to talk a little closer to the mic.
So the low-income program, which is universal life, which is very similar to what PGA has, which is CARES, would actually be carried over into the assessment as well. When we took a look at this, we reviewed this, and then we've moved that along as well when we did the calculations. So anybody that's eligible would continue to go in. And then if people have any questions about the universal lifeline, you can contact us over in Finance Utility Billing. You can also go onto the website to take a look at that, and so we can help you with that if you have any questions on that.
And I think it would make really good sense for the city to have a page on the website and a handout that explains how the universal lifeline works, and both from the eye of the tenant and from the property owner on there. And that would help for all the apartment owners and the property managers for apartment buildings, because that's not exactly clear to me how all that would work. But if we can do a little bit more work there. And then there was one more, although that might have been, that might have been my last. I'm looking at faces, I'm not seeing anybody saying, no, no, I forgot.
Mayor, the only thing, sorry to interrupt.
No, please go ahead.
The only other thing that I can think of is, the person that has a triplex on Palm Avenue was concerned about non-payment and liens on property and perhaps foreclosures. I can have our city attorney address that.
Yes, I'd be happy to. There will actually be no change in the manner of enforcement. The city in our own code, we have the authority to put a lien on property if there is non-payment, extended non-payment of sewer charges. So there really is no change to the property owner who is afraid of what might happen to their property if sewer services over a period of time are not properly paid. The enforcement mechanism is a lien, and that really doesn't change because the sewer charges are now going to be paid through the county. There is no change to that.
Okay, that's kind of the question I was just about to ask. So you're saying it's a separate billing from the landlord to the tenant. Are we offering any sort of amended lease language for something like that? Because you're saying it doesn't apply to the state's rent control. So it is basically, you're saying it's separate. Because you have an existing lease, let's say, you have an existing lease. The tenant pays so much, but now you've changed that. You've put the burden on the property owner for the sewer payment. So it has to be a separate charge.
It has to be paid in a different way. You're right. So in the past in Milbury, to the extent that landlords ask their tenants, or in the lease, require their tenants to pay the utility bill every other month, you know, there is a bill that that tenant would pay. Now that bill will reflect the water, the water costs of the usage and consumption only.
No, you're saying sewer.
And I understand, Gina. And the sewer, the initial impetus is on the property owner to pay the sewer bill, so there would have to be a different process by which the landlord sends a bill to the tenant and says, this is, this is your sewer charge. You're no longer paying it every other month, and here is the amount. Now, they could, they could ask the tenant to pay every other month. They could take the sewer amount for that unit and divide it by six, as if there was a continuation of a bi-monthly payment of the sewer cost. It is going to be a matter... It is going to be a matter, it's going to be different. It is going to be different, and there will have to be an understanding with the tenant and the, between the tenant and the landlord as to how this cost will be covered, because it's the same cost. The cost hasn't changed. It's just the manner of having that obligation covered will be changed. It will be the landlord that will be now saying to the tenant, this is the amount of the sewer cost, please pay it to me every other month, as they have in the past.
And you have, I'm sorry, this, yeah, you, you've mentioned somebody here, 80 units. So you've just now, what I'm saying is, why aren't we offering, what, what obligation, if somebody has 80 units and you've just put that bill for the sewer on the property owner? You understand?
Right, I do.
Okay, so that's a huge.
Initial, yes.
Initial.
Outlet.
But if the tenant has already been obligated, and this is not an, but to pay the utilities here.
Right.
There would need to be an amendment to a written lease, because you have changed the utility to the, a separate line item on the taxes.
So I don't know how these.
So what I'm saying is, why aren't we, or can someone provide for property owners amendments to the lease that would say, now that this is transferred over and you were paying the utilities, you will be required to pay whatever the sewer amount is.
So my assumption, Councilmember Papman, is that the leases and I, leases are all different, and they say different things, and I don't think the city of Millbrae wants to take on amending contractual relationships.
I'm not saying that.
However, my, my assumption is that most leases say that the tenant is responsible for the utilities. Nothing has changed. It's just that the landlord will now be sending the tenant a bill. That has changed. That will be an additional step. But, but nothing has changed in the contractual relationship to the extent the tenant is required under the lease to pay the utilities. That will still be in place. The manner in which it gets done will be changed as to the sewer charge.
So, I'm sorry, so what was kind of requested from the audience is some sort of a letter to tenants. I, I understand what you've just said here, that you're obligated to, and all leases are different, you're obligated to pay the utilities. It's just a notice to the tenants that there will be a separate utility payment directly to the landlord in order to cover this cost.
I don't think, we, we can certainly draft a, a generic letter.
Kind of a letter?
Saying that this is what the city's doing, and this is the, the shifting of the collection of, of the sewer bill. And then each property owner could utilize that, you know, very generically, so there's acknowledgement of this change. But I think the city attorney is correct, this, this is not an amendment to a lease. How are they doing it now?
Right. And I, I don't, you know, think it is.
It's not.
No.
Change to a lease.
It's not changing.
But it's a change to a process. And I think that's all we're asking. And so when this was brought up, when we first talked about it earlier in the year, that was the only question I asked. And that question is, how do we manage that? Because when you say the cost hasn't changed, but in turn, the process has, we're taking the debt collector title from the city and saying, here, property owner is yours. That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
And so when, when, when you do that, all, all they're, all we're asking, and I'm trying to understand, because I know, I hear the benefit to the city, but at what cost? And so that's what I'm struggling with. Because it, I mean, when we're talking about these questions, and we had the time period, there should have been an anticipation of the questions, some, at, at the very least, some of the questions that were asked tonight.
So I would say.
And so, so to that point, when we're saying the delinquency rate is a certain number, and therefore, we're going to pass that on to the county and let them have a secured debt, and then, so now the property owners have some leverage, because I can evict you, I can start the process, because we all know how evicting someone is. And so we're just saying, this is one more thing. We'll let them handle the leverage of having something that we may not have as a city over someone not paying and dealing with the delinquency.
You're saying that's an additional benefit.
And, and it's, obviously, it's a benefit to the city, because that's what was stated, that we have the, the people not paying their bills, and that we're going to have that benefit if the county is taking that, that, that responsibility on. And so for me, it's, I'm, I'm hearing all of the benefits, I'm hearing all the questions, I'm hearing putting a letter together and having a side letter, yeah, that's great. But the reality is, is it worth it? I, I get the $200,000 benefit to the city's bottom line, but is it worth it if, in fact, this is what we're dealing with? We're basically saying, the end result is, we don't have to deal with the debt collection. You, as a property owner, or, or residence, you are going to have to deal with that. And if that is the case, should we not, does it not make sense to, to explore possibly pushing this out a year, two years, so that expiring leases, so that expiring leases can be amended to say, you will deal with this, this way, and we can deal with the rent increases separately? But they will ultimately, by the end of terms of leases, they will be rolled into one. But right now, it just seems that the urgency, we have to communicate that to our residents, and as well as me as, as a council member, I want to be able to understand it, because that question still remains, the why, the why now, and what can we do better in listening to our residents? That's all, so.
Yeah, so the why.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hold on.
So the why is, as, as we mentioned, this has been going on for a couple of years.
Right.
So the why now is, we're at the end of that, that long period. Two is, I don't know how many leases are out there that already exist that the property owner pays and then collects from the tenant. I mean, I don't know if that's 30%, 50%, 80%, I have no idea. The benefit to the city is exactly what you said, Vice Mayor, it's, you know, 160, $200,000 in revenue a year to the city. Now, from a policy perspective, hearing from the people that are here versus the, the amount of community meetings that we had, I mean, yeah, that, that's, that's a policy question, I think, that, okay, yeah, what is the cost benefit? Is it, is it worth the trouble to ensure the city is guaranteed another 160, $200,000 a year in its, in its sewer fund?
And to that, to that question, if the answer is yes, can, does it make sense for us to, to explore, again, having this, be something that we phase in, and we educate, and we create as many opportunities as possible for expiring leases to be rewritten?
Yeah, and, and I think that, you know, we can continue this item tonight, go back out, have some more community engagement meetings, hear more from the property owners that, that are here, that have rental property, and then figure out and hear from them what timing would be, how they would implement, hear more about what, what the specific leases are, because, you know, with 12 people out here, there probably are 12 different leases, or, you know, I, I don't know. But hearing from them, I think, has a lot of merit, for sure, yeah.
It's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we close public comment. City manager? No.
If, if there's anybody in the public that has questions.
It's going to get continued, it sounds to me like it's going to get continued.
Mayor, they can also contact.
City manager, no, let me counter to the Vice Mayor. We've been working on it at least four years. I'm a landlord myself, so the questions posed by the public today were things that were posed before you were elected, and things that, that went through. I know, and this is tricky, because we're the city, but as a landlord myself, my contract is based on California Apartment Association, and I modify it. But I have been thinking about the modifications I've had to do ever since this started moving forward. But I am okay with continuing this for a bit. But I will tell you that there's been staff time put into this. It was at the request of the residents out there, and has been a request for years. And if we throw it out the door and wait another couple of years, that's more staff time to come back. And part of our job as an elected official is how we dictate the use of our staff time, and we have an awful lot on our plate. So I'm willing to support an extension, but I'm not willing to throw this out the door. And I say that as a landlord. There is a workaround. Most of the cities in San Mateo County, and I can't speak, and we've got the consultant had her hand up, most other cities do it this way. We simply need to do our homework from a customer service perspective, and find out how the cities have handled the landlord-tenant situation on that. So it'll come back, and you'll have an opportunity to put a speaker slip when it's continued through there. Otherwise, we lose control of a meeting, and it is my job as mayor to control the meeting. I'm sorry, ma'am, Vice Mayor.
Yes, no, I wasn't, I mean, I'm willing to vote tonight if we're, if we allow the time, and say, hey, this is not going to go into effect until a given time that would allow leases to expire and allow land, current landlords to work with their tenants to make sure that this is all-encompassing. And so, yes, if we approve, excuse me? Right.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you. City manager, what about the second option the Vice Mayor has talked about?
So it would, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is to adopt the tax rule and the rates on the tax rule. The ordinance has already been adopted, the policy's in place, this is just implementation of it. If it's deferred this evening, then we would continue to collect sewer rates the way we are with water bill every other month, and for another year. That would allow us time then to go out and engage more of the, the property owners to hear, you know, what, what are the terms of the leases? Are they, you know, annual, or are they, you know, multi-year? And then get, get an idea, and, and then hear from them on, you know, kind of their thoughts, and, because, because I don't know, I, I mean, I know this, there's a lot of confusion, this is not a rent increase, this is not a change in terms of a lease, it's, you know, Vice Mayor, it's, it's how it's collected.
It's how it's collected, but there's an impact. And that's all, we're talking about the impact on the.
Correct.
The property owners.
And so I think maybe listening more to, you know, some of the property owners, maybe some of the, you know, we've had meetings with the associations, and, and maybe just a little more due diligence is, is, is worthwhile.
So what's the right process, then, to continue this, or to approve it tonight and promise that we'll work with the public over the next year, or not implement it until next?
No, I would not adopt, if, if you don't want to move forward, do not adopt the tax rule this evening.
You might want to listen to the consultant, the consultant had her hand up.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McArgo. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a, a couple of facts in case that it, it helps, because I do know it, it has been mentioned that there are lots of different types of leases. There's also lots of different types of existing situations where, in many cases, the larger unit buildings are already collecting from their tenants directly, their water and sewer bills as well. And then there's also a lot of associations that, the currently, the HOA is being billed, and then because they have subdivided the APN, also each condo unit will have its own APN, we are now dividing it for them on their property tax bill. So probably as many, and again, this is not a statistical certainty, but, but there are as many reverse situations where this is actually getting spread out for the property owners and for the HOAs instead of the other way around. So there's, there's a lot of different scenarios that are happening within the city when it comes to rental, rental agreement, and how the current bills are being collected. So it's not fully a, a change of burden to all property owners. And even one of the property owners this evening mentioned that she has a triplex, and she currently passes on the water and sewer bill. Just from a practical perspective, again, to give you as much information as possible to make your decision, the sewer bills, there will be the decrease in the water bill immediately following the end of the fiscal year, should this go forward. And then while the, the first installment of the tax bills isn't due until or delinquent after December 10th, the county does release the bill and, and make the amount known to the property owners in September. So there's a lot of information that gets provided out there in terms of what the amounts are for the year for all the property owners, et cetera. So just some additional considerations and information as far as some of the different property types and the timeline for you to, to be able to add to your consideration for the evening.
Thank you. Councilman Fung? I'm trying to get a feel then for the, do we want to approve it tonight, or continue the hearing? Then the question to the city is, how long would we want to continue it, continue it to collect more information from landlords and property managers on that? And how long, and what would that look in the staff work plan? And I don't quite know where you are, Councilman Fung, I, I don't.
Let me just ask a question. Director Sung, if we adopt it tonight, when does the change take place? If you can just have a timeline?
If it's adopted tonight, the change would take place effective July 1, and then the assessment.
Mr. Sung, closer to the mic, please.
If, if we adopt it tonight, the change would take place effective July 1, 2023, and the county would send out the property tax assessment rule sometime around September or October to actually show that amount. But if you wanted to see the actual amount by the assessor parcel number, it's already available on our website, so you can see what the charges actually look like by APN number.
And the water bill will immediately reduce beginning July 1?
That's correct. They won't see it until like either the August or the September bill.
Yeah, September bill, because the beginning day is July 1. And when did we adopt the ordinance?
The ordinance was introduced on the 11th, and I believe it was adopted on the 25th of April.
April, okay. And we already had two readings on it, correct?
We, we did. We also had a couple of community meetings, one in April and one in May as well.
Right, so community meetings, both April and May, and some of the speaker earlier had articulated that they received notices in the mail as well. Hold, hold on, hold, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on. Did we, did we not send out notices?
We did. The consultant sent out notices a few weeks ago.
And the notices went to the property or to the owner on record?
It went to the property owners. It's always to the property owners.
Okay. Councilman Fung?
Okay, okay, public, just, just, what's, do we, what timeline in terms of, you know, right now is the 13th, obviously? If, do we have a deadline on getting this done in order to begin on July 1?
So the, the absolute deadline is, you actually have to submit it into the county by July 31st. But we wanted to have a little bit of leeway, just in case, because the county, you have to get it into an acceptable format for the county in itself, because they are very particular about how that's placed in there. So we wanted to provide sufficient timing for this to happen.
So July 31st is your deadline?
That's the absolute drop dead deadline for the county.
Right, you want to, obviously, you want to get it done before that. Okay. I mean, this has been worked on for a long time. So, you know, it's something that has been discussed upon for many years. And I understand the frustration. I, I heard you. I, I heard all the comments tonight, including those who are in the audience tonight, as well as those that are on Zoom. The, the discussion started a lot earlier. We obviously had the.
I'm sorry, public, it is a public meeting. Please.
Yeah, and.
The councilman is speaking. Please be quiet.
And we adopted the ordinance to set this on to the course where we are today, and that had begun, what about April, right? Even before that, right? So it's been a. So it's been a process here. So I think, you know, obviously.
Please don't do that.
Yeah, so if we can spend a little time educating the public a little bit more, right? Continue it for a meeting, hold another.
Continuing the hearing?
Continue the hearing until the next one and then at least having a more opportunity to educate a public more because many questions tonight that was being discussed upon had been discussed before, as a matter of fact. So make sure the facts get discussed upon by everyone in the community. I think that's, that's important. I mean, it's an educational process here for everybody. Changes is uncomfortable. I understand that. I'm also a property owner myself and I also have tenants, so I understand how this process needs to take place and it also takes work and it takes communication. So I would propose we postpone it or continue this for one more meeting so that we have an opportunity to hold at least one more public engagement, public outreach to the public, just to answer everyone's questions so they understand how this changes needs to happen.
Councilman, can I ask, coming from a customer service background, I can definitely see how we could step up on some of our public education materials and, and do exactly what you're saying, but I'm not sure two weeks is enough time to turn this around. Can you do this in two, and actually have enough notice out to the public? Mr. Sung, if we, and we've got three council meetings before we go on summer recess, which is a chance for the public to catch up on all the business of the city without having to basically create staff reports for council meetings on that. So, and in my time on Millbrae, we have not had a lot of August recess because we had a rec center that was burned down. So, Mr. Sung, would you need a little bit more time? And do we have the time?
I'd like questions directed through me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So July 11th is what we recommend.
Okay. Vice mayor.
So first, first off, I respect and honor all the work that's been done over the four years by this council, by our staff, and I honor that. My only question is, it's not about asking more questions and educating. I have a real problem with saying, what's the delinquency rate that was mentioned earlier?
One and a half to 2%.
One and a half, 2%. So if we're talking one and a half, 2% for the city, we're taking that 2% and saying, here, property owners, you do what we couldn't do. That's the concern. So if you can solve that within two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, and then come back and say, this is how we're going to support, we're going to take the $200,000 that we're getting and we're going to put $50,000 directly to our property owners and support them in being debt collectors to that individual that may be on a limited income. We talked, we heard someone say they had a cousin that's disabled. And so that's the question. How are we going to support those individuals trying to become debt collectors now? Because, yeah, a good tenant is going to pay it. They're going to accept it, they're going to say, okay, yeah, we understand. But to those that aren't, are we going to provide some support? Are we going to provide some guidance? And, or are we going to say, hey, we're going to allow some leases to sunset and then we're going to allow, we're going to start holding you accountable? But that's, that's what I'm getting at as a council member, just as a layperson that wasn't here four years ago. It does not seem, doesn't seem right. And so I'm just trying to understand it. And I'll vote no tonight and probably then, but we have the votes to get to a yes, but I'm just, I want to, I want to be a yes. And I'm just asking, can we answer some of those questions in, in the form of a solution?
Thank you, vice mayor. Before I call on Councilman Pappan, again, having been with this process for the beginning, it was not to make it easier for the city to collect debts. That's only something that has come in.
That's a benefit.
The main reason we did it was that the public property owners asked us to do this. They would come to council meetings and, and the property owners have been here for years coming and asking us for this because it helped them with their annual budgeting on that. And that, it was never an intention to make it easier for collecting basically one and a half to 2%, which is, if I've been told correctly, is a pretty low rate here in Millbrae. So it's actually, you know, probably within a good statistical number on that. The reason we did this is we had people coming for years asking to do this. They may have had properties in other communities that did it this way, they wanted it in Millbrae. And I'm going to stress that as someone who's been working on this, even before we actually really started working on it, we heard it for years and it had nothing to do with debt collection.
But it, that 1% to 2% represents $200,000.
It, it's, it's a number and I do agree that we can do more public education and assistance. My more concern was how many of our people could be on lifeline and are not and how are we reaching them?
But again, to my point, that's a solution. And that's on us to get that to our property owners and our residents.
Regardless of how property tax is done or regardless of how sewer fees are done, it's the same thing, whether you're paying it, the tenant is paying it or the landlord, it's the same thing.
And that's not my problem. That's not what I'm, that's not the challenge that I have. I have the challenge of us not listening to our property owners.
Okay, I think that's unfair because we have been listening for years.
Okay, then I'm talking about now that I've been on council. And all I'm saying is that's a question that I asked then, when it was first brought to my attention, and it's a question I'm asking now, and I need clarity before I can move forward because I want to make sure that this isn't just something that, oh yeah, this is a money-strapped city that says, hey, we can't find money anywhere, we found this opportunity, let's go after it. I need to be able to communicate that to residents, I need to be able to sleep at night as well. So there's other ways to raise funds and if this is one way and it's a way that we believe is dire, then let's move forward, but let's make sure we're doing so in a prudent way that makes sure that we're communicating to our residents the why and we're finding out if there's other solutions that we can support them in that process, we're doing it. That's all.
So city manager, hearing the vice mayor, he has points, although I disagree on that, but he has points. Can we, by July 11th, can we build some of that in? In no time ever, ever was this looked at as a revenue generator for the city, never in any discussion on that. Hold on.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, we're tied, so we did have, and heavily noticed, two community meetings. We had four people show up. And so I think, you know, listening to the direction, we can go out and try it again and advertise and get the word out and see how many people show up. We have, how many parcels do we have in the city, Mike?
About 7,000.
So 7,000 parcels that this impacts. I think there's been dialogue over the years. We've heard positives tonight. For the first time, you know, we're hearing some negatives. I think it's worth continuing, going back out, having some community engagement, listening to what the issues are in terms of management of individual properties and the burden it may have and figuring out if this cost benefit is worth it or not.
Thank you, city manager.
Because that's what it is, a cost benefit question.
City manager, Gina. I'm sorry, Councilman Pappan.
Thank you. It's always concerning when people say they didn't know. And I do think, with all the people here tonight, please let us know. I do, why, or, you know, where did it go to and why weren't some people noticed here? As the mayor said, this has been a very long process. I think we would benefit by all, there were great questions tonight, really, really good questions. We need to put those questions up, they need to be a part of the report, as do the answers to those questions because a lot of this is very frustrating for people and I get it. It's frustrating for many people. You've got a 248-page report here. We need to really address the questions as they have been here presented and if people have more questions, please, you know, send them in, let's get them all answered and let's move ahead in an educated fashion here so that we know what people are asking, we know, they know what the answers are to all these questions. I think that is a better direction to go forward in. And two, if people haven't heard of it before two weeks ago or something, you know, tell us that too. Just email it in, but let's, let's be transparent here, let's get all those questions answered on the website so people know if I'm looking for, you know, is this require a separate lease? Who's going to handle this? If I've got 80 units, who's going to, where does that, how does it work? How does it come into play? And is the city, is this revenue generation for the city? What, let's, let's just answer all the questions, the public deserves that, and I think we can do that within the timeframe presented here. And I would suggest that we continue it for that purpose.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, then I believe the motion is to continue tonight's public hearing to July 11th. And do we need to stipulate at least one additional outreach? I think the staff report says 7,100 property owners. So if we're going to go out again, the question is, is it getting to the tenant or is it getting to the property owner? To me is the question.
Again, it goes to the property owner on record.
So then again, we could in, on July 11th, have a bunch of renters who are suddenly hearing something new on that too. That's always the problem between, between that. So maybe we encourage our property owners to make sure their renters know that this is happening on that. And so if there's a motion in a second, is that sufficient for the referendum of the motion?
Yes. So moved.
Thank you, councilwoman.
A second.
Thank you, councilman. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Councilmember Pappan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Public hearing item number nine is continue to July 11th, 2023 city council meeting by the vote of 4 to 0. Will we be posting the questions and the answers? I'd like that to be part of.
Okay, sure, sure. There's a request to take a two-minute break.
Sure, to answer the councilwoman's question, yes, that will continue to be part of our community outreach and engagement.
Thank you.
City clerk, I tried to capture everybody's address, but. City Clerk, I tried to capture everybody's address, but not... MCTV, how are we? Okay? Eduardo, are we good? Thank you. And we are reconvening after a break. Just a reminder that we, City Council has been here since 5:30, so thank you for allowing us to have that break. Moving on to existing business, this is agenda item number 10. Receive the proposed operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2023 and 2024 and adopt a resolution of the Millbrae City Council appropriating the operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. And this is an action. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Mr. Mike Sung, for a staff presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. So today we'll be talking about the proposed operating and capital budget. And at the end, there is an action to take as well, to adopt the operating and capital budget. So let's go ahead and start. Next slide, please. So very briefly, I'm going to highlight our budget. Our proposed budget is $96.3 million, and that's for all funds. Of that, almost $40 million would be from the general fund. We're continuing to have cost containment measures. They are offsetting the reductions that are still coming from the pandemic. And as we're exiting out right now, we're actually continuing with our next phase, which is to look at some robust economic development, as well as accommodating significant housing growth in the area. And that's really due to state mandate. Some critical projects that we're looking at for next year, which we've kind of highlighted before in previous budget study sessions, include the Hillcrest Sub Basin, as well as Owani Drive and nearshore outfall, and the water main replacement on Broadway. Next slide, please. So just as a quick aside, you'll see that the general fund sources, it's been updated. We're looking at about $39.7 million. And it's... No, next slide, please. And then just to talk really briefly, just to remind everyone, we don't get that much from the property tax, the 1% ad valorem. We actually only get a little bit less than 16 cents per dollar. You can see that the county gets about 28 cents, and then the school district actually gets the line share of the property tax. And there's very little pieces for some of the other groups, like mosquito abatement, for example. They don't get quite as much. Next slide, please. So what does this really mean? On a $2 million home in Millbrae, the ad valorem 1% tax is $20,000. The City of Millbrae's share is approximately a little bit less than $3,200, $3,157. And you can see that we actually don't get that much revenue from the property tax in itself when compared to the other entities. Next slide, please. Same actually goes for sales tax, another one of our big revenue sources. You can see that the city receives 1% out of the 9.375%. Most of that actually goes to the state. Pretty good portion, 1.375% actually goes to the county transit district. And then about 1% goes to the county as well. Next slide, please. So in the next slide, you can see how the breakdown is actually there. Millbrae gets 1%. The San Mateo Transportation gets 1.375. The county gets 1%, and then the state gets line share, which is 6% of the 9.375. Next slide, please. So expenditures, that's also been updated. That's now $39.7 million as well. The main change from the budget study sessions until now that you're seeing is that there's some additional general fund costs, one-time costs. City Council had met in regards to the strategic initiatives and council goals. And we had presented, I believe, at the last meeting that the eight highest scoring priorities were to be taken a look at and to find funding for them. So we have mixed together funding from both the Community Development Technology Fund, the General Plan Update Fund, and the general fund itself to help fund that. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the changes from the study sessions include the council priorities. It was a total of $2.175 million for the eight priorities for fiscal year 2324. There's a few minor revenue and expenditure projection updates as well. And then the other thing that has been added is a three-quarter time recreation coordinator, and that's due to a significant increase in activity that we're projected to see in 2324. Total Citywide FTE is proposed to be 93.25, up 1.75 from last year, which was 91.5. Next slide, please. And our recommendations to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2324 general fund and operating budget and appropriating funds to the Capital Improvement Plan. With that, I am open for any questions and...
Councilwoman Papen. Thank you, Mr. Sung.
Wrong button. Thank you again. So real quick, so if we receive grant money in any way, shape, or form where it requires matching funds, have we already set aside for things like that? Or do we have to readjust?
So if we actually have received the money, we would have set it aside. If we're looking into it into the future, we would come back to council if we do have a grant that does require some type of matching.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papen. Okay. I wasn't going to bring this up, but the public brought it up earlier, and it's something that I've been talking to the city manager about. A big portion of Millbrae is owned by public agencies, and it's my understanding that those public agencies pay no property tax, nothing, and yet they can drive their vehicles all over Millbrae. And I am talking about San Francisco Public Utilities Commission and SFO. And earlier tonight, the general manager of the Mosquito Vector Control Agency talked about 45 acres out there. So I have asked council or staff to come up with just how many acres in Millbrae are property that we do not receive anything from. And I bring this up now because it was lovely to read the staff report. I'm really appreciating how good the staff reports are getting and that our TOT is bouncing back. But we were a city that everybody was jealous of prior to COVID with having so many hotels. But it's not necessary, as we learned in COVID, not so good, but we're recovering. If La Quinta, the hotel on El Camino Real, is purchased by the county, that becomes a public agency, we don't only lose the TOT, which the two public members who brought this up are completely spot on, we need that revenue. We're losing property tax and anything else along with that. So I'm just bringing it up here. I'm happy to approve the budget on this, but I am concerned when we have outside agencies that are making us, and I do firmly believe this, that Millbrae is unique in the number of outside agencies. We are an under-resourced city because of that. And to make that clear mainly to the Daily Journal, that means we don't get the same tax revenue given our size.
Mayor, I'm going to just...
No, City Manager, I'm just...
No, no, I just, for the record, I just need to make sure this item on La Quinta is not on the agenda, so I just need to just caution.
Okay, all right.
That, I understand what you're saying about how revenue works as part of the budget.
I'm saying that if that sale goes through, we lose property tax and TOT, and Millbrae is under-resourced, and we need to start in our documents, like you've done for sales tax and property tax, is to show what percentage of Millbrae drives no revenue, and we cover the cost for their operations. So that's what I'd like to see in the future. With that, opening it up to public comment.
Mayor, there are no hands raised for this item.
Thank you, and I have no paper slips. And seeing no other comments, I think you've done such a good job tonight if I can have a motion to adopt the budget.
So moved.
Papen, second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fung, Councilwoman Papen. Any additional discussion? Please call the question.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The City Council adopted a resolution of the Millbrae City Council appropriating the operating and capital budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 by the vote of four to zero.
Thank you. And last up, under new business, is amendment to the Millbrae Municipal Code, Chapter 2.10.070 regarding membership on the Park and Recreation Commission, and adopt a resolution updating the membership rules for the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and the Senior Advisory Committees. And this is an action. Staff.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Staff is bringing forward a recommendation from the Council and Commissioning Committee in view Subcommittee to update the Commission Committee's eligibility. Sorry, can't speak anymore. And this is for the full City Council's consideration. Next slide, please. The City of Millbrae has three commission and five committees. Out of the eight commission committees, four of which requires its members to be Redshirt Millbrae Voters. The council interviews will be met on May 12th to discuss the commission committees, and they provide staff direction to make it accessible for Millbrae residents to become members to commission and committees. Next slide, please. City staff review the membership requirements for each commission committee and propose the recommended amendments and highlighted in yellow. Parks and Recreation Commission, Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and Senior Advisory Committee will go from qualified electors to Millbrae residents. Planning Commission will remain requiring qualified electors to be part of its planning commission. And that is what we're proposing. And next slide, please. Tonight, we are requesting council action to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance to amend Chapter 2.10.070 Park and Recreation Commission membership and adopt a resolution updating the membership requirements to Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and Senior Advisory Committee.
Thank you, City Clerk. First, I want to say thank you to the Subcommittee for this, for, I mentioned this, I think, one council meeting before, and it's back here, so thank you, staff, on bringing this back. For the public, one of the reasons I support this motion, although I do understand there might be a modification to it, is I met with a young woman who is on the path of getting her citizenship, but she's not a citizen yet, and she would love to serve on the Culture Arts Advisory Committee. So I couldn't be happier to have this in front of us tonight. With that, I think, is that Councilwoman Papen? Comment?
Yes, I do have a comment.
Please.
That is good to know. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am concerned, I think, someone within the process of getting citizenship or residency, even legal residency. Yeah, I don't know how strict we've been in the past here. I think we do need some flexibility, shall I say? But I would be concerned if it's just kind of a universal amendment. So that's what I'm concerned about here. We want everybody in the community to participate here, but I do think, let me put it more simply here. If someone is here, we used to say, if you're not registered to vote and you apply for a committee, the reason was that you don't really have to vote, but if you're not even willing to register to vote to be a part of one of these committees, it's kind of concerning that how the interactions of the committee happen. I think we want people who are committed to the community to participate here. And you stated one very good example of that. So I'm just concerned that we have some flexibility built in here, but we do want to encourage that. So I'm not sure how to put it. If somebody could help on those.
With your permission, I heard about it, the city manager, and I talked about it briefly. City Manager, do you have a comment on how we might be able to work that? We talked about it before closed session today.
So work it in terms of what?
You had a carve-out. You said that there was a way to reflect that.
No, I think what I was saying is, I think, Councilmember Papen's concern is that if this is a blanket, don't have to be registered to vote, what about those people that have been here, that are citizens, that haven't registered to vote? Now all of a sudden, they went to get involved in civics. I don't want to put words in the councilmember's mouth, but... So I think there was a concern about commitment. If somebody's not registered to vote, then what is their commitment to civics and their engagement? But with that is, we have a lot of residents that may, that are not eligible to register to vote. So all I was saying is that there could definitely be a carve-out for our residents that want to participate but are not even eligible to become voters, to hear their voice, have them participate and engage. So if that's, you know, the direction of what the council would like to go, or if not, you can take our recommendation and just make it a blanket, you know, you need to be a resident. And there are a couple of different ways to skin a cat, so to speak, and we're here to...
You definitely have to live here by residency. We've stated that. Please, please.
I think the spirit of all this is to promote greater civic engagement and being more inclusive to everyone who lives in Millbrae, who wants to make this place better, right? Yes, you know, part of our tradition as an American is that we vote, and we elect our own leaders. That's an important part of our civic duty. But that doesn't change the fact that those, just like what you said, Mr. Williams, you know, a moment ago, those who may not necessarily have the privilege to vote, but yet still want to contribute, we should not take away their opportunity, because we can certainly tap into those resources. There are many good residents here who wish to participate and yet may not be eligible to vote. And so we're here to make sure those who wish to serve have every opportunity to serve, and that's the spirit of this change.
Yeah. I do agree. For example, cultural arts, right, that requires you to be a Millbrae voter, but what about someone who's underaged? Maybe they want to participate in arts, and I think that'll be a great benefit to the city if we have participants that can participate in that way.
And I don't think the Youth Advisory Committee has ever required voting.
Not for Youth Advisory Committee, but Cultural Arts...
You do need to be a youth.
No, but I think the point made. We did actually have a person under 18 who wanted to be on MCAC, but the MCAC rule says you must be a registered voter, and they can't be a registered voter. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, this is near and dear to me. When someone says you have to do this to do that, that's typically used to exclude people, whether you're Asian, whether you're Black. Historically, that's who we were as a country when we talk about traditions of our country. And so the reason I support it as is is because as an educator, I support dreamers, undocumented students that need support. And so if one of those students, if one of their parents, if one of our residents wants to apply for a commission, for a committee, I want to say come.
Yeah.
I don't want to exclude you. I don't want to have there be a real barrier or a perceived barrier to you coming and serving your community that may lead to you becoming a citizen, becoming a vice mayor, a council member, or any of that. So I think it's beyond, it goes beyond what we're talking about here, and it's us as a council standing strong and sending a message to our community that your voice is welcome. We talk a lot about equity. We talk a lot about voice. We talk a lot about representation, and that's what this is about to me. And I believe that's what it's about to all of us up here. And I just want to give us an opportunity to kind of reset and make sure that we're projecting the right wording that we mean. Of course, we may have meant, yeah, if you've been a voter and now all of a sudden you can, you couldn't even register, I get it. But at the same time, that's the beauty of being an American. We have the right and freedom of expression. So that might be the way they express their rights, by saying, I don't want to register. But I do want to give a damn about my community. I want to participate in civic engagement here locally.
I also want to mention one more thing, if you don't mind, but we do have a good amount of youth applicants, and so far, we only have a Youth Advisory Committee that they could join. So I think this will be a great way to allow them to greater participate in the city.
Since you brought that up, San Mateo has just added, I don't know if Gina was going to grab that one, they've added two youth positions to their Park and Rec Commission. I think they're non-voting, but again, it's a way of encouraging young people to get involved. And if we're doing rec programs, we really should have some young people dictating what we're doing. So I'd be open to that. I love the idea that San Mateo did.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the conversation. I think this has been great. I think our only concern back when was that you live in Millbrae, and that's fine. Whatever your status is, I'm perfectly, that was very well put, Vice Mayor, so I'm fine with this, because in the past, we've had questions whether people live here or from other cities. So I'm fine with it as is, and I thank you very much for the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you. Yay. One comment, though. One committee does have a, you live here or you have a business here, EVAC, Economic Vitality Advisory. So it's the one thing that has a slightly different set of rules on that. Well, if that is great, this is an action item. Is there, oh, opening it up for public comment? I have no slips.
Mayor, it doesn't look like we have any hands raised online.
Okay.
Move approval.
In which case, closing public, I'm sorry, closing public, I'm sorry, Joan?
Just procedurally, you actually have an ordinance which would require two readings. So this would be an introduction of the ordinance that's going to be amending...
I think there was a waiver.
And we waived the first reading, introduced, and then we also have a resolution.
A second, okay.
So we could take them separately. We could waive the first reading, introduce the ordinance, and then that will take care of the Parks and Recs Commission.
Okay.
And then the resolution addresses all your committees.
And that's my motion.
Okay.
My first reading.
My second.
Very good. Any discussion? Is that one vote or two votes, then?
Those could be two separate items. I said, I'm assuming that everyone's going to vote the same on both.
Okay, so we're going to do two votes.
Okay.
Okay. City clerk, if you could call the vote.
All right. Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The City Council waived the first reading and introduced an ordinance to amend Chapter 2.10.070 Park and Recreation Commission membership by the vote of four to zero.
Thank you.
And move resolution.
And approve the resolution.
Oh, isn't it two, two separate?
Yep, they took two and one.
Okay. And then also...
This was a twofer.
It's two for one. Got it.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? No further discussion, call the vote.
All right. Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Resolution to update the membership requirements for Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and Senior Advisory Committee passed by a vote of four to zero.
Excellent. You've given me homework, because now I have to go find the young woman. We had coffee at Phil's Coffee where she was showing her artwork, and I hope she'll get her application in for MCAC. She really, really wanted to serve, so I couldn't be happier. Thank you so much. All right, council comments. And Vice Mayor.
I don't really have much to say. I do want to just say, when I started as a servant to our community, one of the things I've always said was, as your elected officials and your elected representative, hold us accountable. And that's what I want to continue to say. I want you all, as a community, as staff, to hold me personally accountable. I may not agree 100% all the time with recommendations or with my council members, but I'm doing so with the best intent and best interest of our residents, and I'm happy. For the most part, I don't want to be bitter. I don't want to be angry. I just want us to focus on moving our city forward and getting to where we can be collectively as a city. And with that said, I want us to continue on that path. Hold me accountable. I'll continue to make sure that I create a space where my colleagues can do the same, and I can do the same of them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Fung.
Thank you. Recently, in the last few days, there's been some discussions by the constituency reaching out to me, and also heard from the Board of Supervisory Meeting today, as well as the public comment today about the possibility that there is an intent by the county to purchase La Quinta. And I would say, you know, Millbrae will certainly be at the table to ensure and support functional zero homelessness here in Millbrae. I mean, it takes a collaborative effort. And I will say, Millbrae has done an excellent job in the last few years, dedicating much of our time and resources and staff effort in helping everyone who is in need in a multifaceted approach with life moves, and we've been very successful at it. So efforts such as this require bringing the community together and discussions among everyone. So I welcome this discussion with the county, and just bringing people together, bringing people along with, you know, transparencies and information so that everybody understands the direction at which we're moving, so that we can create a collaborative solution to ending homelessness here in San Mateo County. So to that end, I want to thank you for that effort, and also participate at the SAMCDA. Is it 70 years? Is that right, city manager?
Yep.
70 years for SAMCDA. That was an excellent celebration. Thank you for all they do, you know, as a county and as a community is better because of their involvement. Thank you so very much for that.
Thank you, councilmen. Councilwoman Pappin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the SAMCDA celebration was wonderful, and they have done amazing work for our city and all the cities and all the people of San Mateo County. Also was excited to participate in and attend the City of San Mateo's first Pride Parade. There was a lot of togetherness, love, and support for just everyone there, and it was a very, very nice event. I'm sure they'll have more as we move ahead. Also, self-help for the elderly. That was a wonderful event, and they have put such time, services, and community efforts into our community. I am hoping that we can renew our funding for them moving forward here, because they do help so many different people, like five days a week. And it's just so important to all of the residents of Millbrae here, and getting people out and engaged is really about community and bringing community together. So that was very nice. I also am a member of the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, and we recently passed a rental assistance program to prevent homelessness. It is a pilot program. Just for the stats here, 36,800 Bay Area residents are unhoused in 2022. 575,000 people are at risk of being homeless. Seniors are the fastest-growing homeless population, increasing 108% between 2017 and 2020. Older adults, the cause of homelessness is likely financial or health crisis. So it's happening each and every day all around us. Black older residents in California are more likely to be cost burden, paying more than 30% of their income, and severely cost burden, paying more than 50%. So this is a program, $5 million, that was established for the purpose of trying to prevent people from going into homelessness. It is a program where they would give 48 months of rental assistance. It is starting in, hopefully, just a couple jurisdictions, but hopefully from there, we'll get more funding to help assist, again, this is geared towards seniors. It's based on AB 1487. And we're looking forward to this program and many, many others so that we can really address the issue before people become homeless. So hopefully, that's a great program that takes off, and we will watch closely. And we are hoping San Mateo County, in connection with Santa Clara, the more we partner, the better results we get. So very proud of that program, and hopefully, we'll see it grow into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I guess first, I was able to go on the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency's field trip. So we started, we started in San Mateo, but we went from basically San Bruno, stopping at all of the water facilities that bring us fresh water. And we ended up in Yosemite, and I know that's a boo hoo, got to spend the night above O'Shaughnessy Dam, got to go into the dam, got to go into the tunnels underneath the dam. And I think the big message to all of us is we have really incredible water. We are lucky enough here in Millbrae to be 100% hetch-hetchy water, and this water flows almost entirely by gravity to us. But we also, we, the 24 agencies and the City of San Francisco, spent a lot of money to bring it up to earthquake codes. And the message that came to us was, have you ever gone to your water and turned it, with a few exceptions, and not had water? And how important water is. And a lot of that, when you compare it to other utility systems, not in Millbrae, other utility systems, is that Basca, its member agencies, including Millbrae, have invested in that. And that is one of the reasons why our water is more expensive, but gosh, it's good water. I mean, when you see the science behind the water in it, right from the start, from Yosemite on down, it's pretty amazing. I would also tell you, because it's been in the Chronicle a lot lately about the unfair water rights and the state possibly trying to take control of water rights to the State Water Board, is that the SF Water System, the hetch-hetchy system, we're not a primary water right owner. We're a secondary water right owner. So a lot of that pressure, we didn't get the water in the beginning. San Francisco did, and we did, but we're basically considered a second level on that. So there's a lot, when you read these water articles, it's, of course, it's water. It's a lot more complicated than it seems. Last week, last week, or the week before, I attended the San Francisco Planning Commission, where the Planning Commission voted 601 absent to approve the final EIR, Environmental Impact Report, for San Francisco Sea Level Rise Program, which they're calling their Shoreline Protection Program, in that they will build nine-to-15-foot walls on their portion of the airport, and at least here in Millbrae, fill in five acres of mud flats right on our border. Something that they've actually been saying since before I was elected and served on the vulnerability assessment. They don't like the mud. They don't like nature-based. They don't like birds, and they're using this EIR for that. It's approved. The clock is ticking. It's going to have noise ramifications. It's going to have all kinds of ramifications on Millbrae, and I think we have a 30-day clock to comment on that. So I will be asking for a closed-door session so that we can talk about this. I did, when I spoke up there, I did say, it didn't have to be this way, that the San Francisco Planning staff could have come to Millbrae and met with us and worked with something, and they have agreed to meet. I missed their email. It was while I was gone last week. They would, they've sent me an email to formally ask to meet with the City of Millbrae and talk about things, and talk about greater issues on that. But like any environmental impact report, it's been approved. It's going to move forward, including their comment about Site 7 is, well, SFO turned it into a construction yard 10 years ago, therefore it's grandfathered in. So, and that's right at our Veterans Preferred Housing. So we need to move forward on that. The SF Roundtable met, and we gave in a lot of comments to the Federal Aviation Administration on their work plan, and a lot of it includes changing the metrics for noise. I had been promised a meeting with the public to talk about noise issues. I'm hoping we can get that done in the next six months, because this is when the FAA reauthorization is happening. And basically, what happens in Millbrae is the noise metrics the FAA uses, the Federal Aviation Administration, does not include the kind of noise we get. Therefore, none of our homes qualify for the insulation program from the airport, or what they're doing now is going into homes that they put in windows in, and they recognize they did a bad job. So they're replacing those windows in San Bruno and South City, but they're not doing it here in Millbrae. And I know a number of residents, including my parents' home, that have basically rotted out the complete framing where these windows went in. So it behooves us to fight for our city and for our residents. Next week, I'm going to Cal City's Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Committee, where we work on legislation, working on that. And I want to give a huge shout out to the city manager. the city manager and to our city engineer and public works director for listening to me and signing up for National League of Cities Grant Boot Camp. The orientation was today. The mayor gets to come to a couple of the meetings, but I, I know we're in good hands, and it'll create a network to help Milbrae become more competitive at these big water projects on that. So I was very happy to see both the city manager and Mr. Batista there today, and I leave it in your hands. Today was just orientation, and I'm, I'm really glad, because I think they're going to be, create a network for us on that. And I can tell you that the National League of City staff almost weekly reaches out to me to say, Anne, how are you doing? How's this going? Where do you need help? They, unlike CalCity's, has a small city program that's really looking at cities like us, little cities, on there. So it's been, it's been a busy couple of weeks, and I'm, I'm very grateful that we are in the boot camp program, which will be going for next four or five months, next four months, and that hopefully, it'll put us in fighting form for getting grants for our sewage treatment plant. With that, I haven't been told that we're closing in honor of everyone. I would, oh, please, go ahead, Councilwoman.
My apologies. Yes, if we may, close in remembrance of Joan Micaletti, who's a neighbor of mine, and she passed away just this week.
Condolences to friends and family, and we will officially close in her honor. Thank you. With that, thank you, staff, and it is 10:08, and we are closing council. Our journey.